All right. Good evening Nottingham. We will call to order. Our August fourth, the select board meeting. We'll start with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, we will get started. Uh Matt Sherland is not going to be here this evening. He's excused. Um and then um. Administrator Ellen White is not gonna be here either. She is out of town, so it will be the four of us running the show.
All right.
Things oughta go pretty smoothly.
Yeah, I would think so.
What could go wrong?
Mister Decker. I'm just wondering, is there anything you want to disagree with before we get started?
Don't pick on him. He got us this lovely table.
Yes, thank you, Mister Decker, for providing the updated furnishings for this room, uh including the credenza and. And then I think there's more in meeting room two as well, so it's nice to have. A nice inviting space. Um so let's get started with the accounts payable and payroll.
Everybody have a chance to look at it? Okay, make a motion to approve the um accounts payable for eight four two thousand twenty five. And the payroll for eight five two thousand twenty four.
I will second that.
Motion and a second, all in favor? Motion carries. How about the minutes for the July twenty first meeting?
Any corrections?
I have one correction. Uh line.
For the public?
Yes, the public, sorry. Uh line fifty three, uh Reed, Jean Reed should be R E E D. I believe.
Yep.
And I have a correction also on the next line fifty four. Carol Martin should be K A R Y L. It's a different spelling of Carol.
Yep, I missed that one.
John, I'm gonna catch up to you one of these days.
One for one. Is that it? Make a motion to approve the minutes, the public minutes of seven twenty one two thousand twenty five and the non-public meetings. Minutes of seven twenty one two thousand twenty five. Would the two corrections made?
I will second that.
Motion and a second, all in favor? Motion carries. Uh reports from line boards of committees and departments. I want to start with you, Mister Wel.
Okay, so recycling center, we are down. I'm an employee. So we're actively searching for a new employee if anybody's interested. We glad to um entertain a uh.
Do you have postings on the website? Is it up on the website yet?
I haven't looked, but it should be up on the website right now, so. Um other than that, everything's going well down there. Everything seems to be in order.
Is it all painted?
All painted, looks good. So uh yeah, everything's looking really good down there.
I I've heard some really good feedback, just, you know, not asking, but just people mentioning. How improved and how helpful people have been down there.
I I did put a pair of suspenders on tonight. I didn't want you to um.
Have to note that in the notes.
Yes, yes. And recreation department's doing well. Um summer playground programs winding down. I think the last day is gonna be Friday.
Really?
Yeah, it's summer.
Over on Friday.
Yep, summer's over.
Exciting things.
Don't tell my kids that.
I mean, school's coming.
School's coming.
Don't say the S word, Steve. Mister Decker?
Uh planning board, Matt, I believe it was the uh sixteenth. Um and our big topic was uh one that I believe we will be discussing tonight with the. About the uh um. Actually, it's not on our agenda. Um the bond for. The Berto, yes.
It's our general business.
Okay, so general. The Berto subdivision.
Development over on Mitchell.
Yeah. Yep, and uh I did manage to acquire some furniture for us, so. That was good. In in addition to the two conference rooms. Uh we did get another table for the P D, some chairs for the fire department, so.
Thank you very much.
Don't thank me, I just.
Facilitated it.
Facilitated. So um that's all I got.
All right. Um master planning committee meeting, we had a meeting last Thursday. Unfortunately, I was unable to attend at the last minute.
And I can tell you, we're working on the vision statement.
Yes. Well, I was gonna say it, Steve. I wasn't there, but I did get some notes, but go ahead.
You actually read it?
Yes. So yes, they um didn't go into great detail on some of the chapters. They're trying to kind of, I guess, focus on the mission of our. And vision of the master planning committee document.
It was actually fairly comprehensive. It was a very good meeting, actually.
Less than two hours?
Actually, less than two hours.
Fantastic. But I did have an opportunity to meet with Chief Woodman uh and Corporal Alvarez on Friday afternoon. My, part of my chapter is the facilities, facilities chapter, um and talking about each of the departments that use the facilities. Um and it was very enlightening to kind of sit down with them and go through some of the challenges the police department's facing, but then also some of the great things they do. I was talking with them and they were talking about a lot of the equipment that they they use and people ask about, you know, the expenses for it and. You know, what are we using it for? And there was a shooting in Hampton last month, Hampton Beach.
With someone who came through.
Person was in Deerfield. Well, the Corporal Alvarez using the drone is the one that found him. So I didn't realize that. It wasn't in the story, but. So I encourage Chief Woodman to share stories like that so that we can kind of share it publicly.
Right.
Unappropriate, but.
It's awesome.
Yeah. Yes, well, yeah, that we used the drone to help find. The person.
It's a great tool.
Yes, so. Um but yeah, it was, we got, we spent about two hours together going through a bunch of stuff with the. Yes. The alleged. Yes. You should talk to him. The alleged.
Allegedly.
Yeah, allegedly. But yeah, other than that, I know we've got our next meeting at the end of this month, so.
That's it for you?
Yeah.
Um so police department for me too. Um the two cars are in. Um they're gonna take a little while to be outfitted because the place that does all the outfitting with all the electronics and wrapping it. Is backed up, but they hope to have them on the road very soon. Uh Chief Woodman asked me again to remind everybody that National Night Out, which is police and community event. That happens all over the country uh is happening tomorrow night here at the community center, starting at five o'clock. And the select board will be grilling and we promised to cook the burgers all the way through this year. Um uh celebrate, I'm just gonna editorialize because Ellen isn't here today. Uh it's something that's very dear to my heart as the uh mother of a police officer. Uh just celebrating all that the police do for us, not just in solving crimes, but in preventing crimes. And that's why that community connection is so important. Um and I think our chief and our staff here really believe that. That by working hard and doing a lot of community outreach here, they prevent crime. And that's one of the reasons that Nottingham is a safe place to live and such a desirable place. Um I'd also like to thank, no, 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 my turn. I would like to thank the Celebrate Nottingham group for providing tomorrow night with a professional fireworks show. They have raised tons of money to help bring the community together. And so it fits in perfectly. Tomorrow, there's gonna be music, free food, uh all sorts of community. Um uh programs represented there and then the grand finale is gonna be a terrific fireworks show. So it's not to be missed. I do believe the weather's supposed to be good and uh everybody should come out and support community.
That's cool. The meal's free?
The meal is free.
Yep. From five P M to nine P M. Band comes on at six, I believe.
Right, I forgot the band. Yep, there's music, so there's something for everyone. Family should come out. It's really a special night. Five, I believe. Thank you, and that's all my news from the police department for now.
Thank you. Um Miss White is not here, but just a couple of things to update folks on is. Uh I think most people got the wonderful letter from Avatar over the course of the past few weeks, which updated assessed value of your property. Um in there, there was a section where you can go on to sign up for an appointment. I believe the last day for appointments is Thursday of this week, so. Um if you are missing your letter, can't seem to find it, you can go to Avatar's website. And there's a section uh where you can log in, the login information, the pa- the username is Town of Nottingham. And then the password is Nottingham T W N, where you can log in and you can look up your property card and see what the assessed value was. Um there, and again, you can reach directly up to Avatar if you'd like to have a conversation about the valuation. Uh and keep in mind, uh and the letter was very clear about this too, is because the revaluation, most people saw their property. Values go up by twenty five to thirty five percent. Some people a little bit more, some people a little bit less. Um is that, that doesn't mean your property taxes are going to go up necessarily. It's part of um, you know, the, once they have those valuations, then they redo the actual property tax rate, so.
And that's up to the state, I understand.
The state sets the rate based upon our spending. And then also you have the county and the um state education tax that you have to pay, which is a little bit different, so. I think potentially those are the pieces we could see increased based upon our valuation being a portion of New Hampshire's assessed value being higher. Because we could see our shared costs for those go up, but. The dollars that we're spending for the school in the town are the dollars that we're spending, so we don't spend more because the assessed value could go up. National line out, I don't think I could add any more to that. Thank you, Charlotte. And yeah, I think that was about it. General business, special events, license application for the harvest supper. Um so we did have a special event, our first, using our new application, um submitted for a harvest supper uh in September. On September twentieth, two thousand twenty five, here uh at the community center from five o'clock to eight. I'm not gonna steal your thunder, Mrs. Letterer. I'll let you get up and talk about exactly what it is, but um just a couple of um quick notes is there. The organization is not a non-for-profit, but they are working with the Celebrate Nottingham Committee and the Historical Society to put this. Uh this function together. It is uh over fifty people, which is why the select board is reviewing it. It was one of the amendments we made to the special events license. Um it is within the sixty, so typically these applications were required to be submitted sixty days prior to the event, so it is. Under that, but I think that's an exception that we would consider making, so. Miss Letterer?
Thank you. Lee Letterer, forty eight Flutter Street. Uh I'm here on behalf of the Nottingham Social Club's Harvest Supper Committee to inform you of these plans about uh. Reviving the Harvest Suppers. They were previously sponsored by Nottingham Women's Club and that ended in the early nineteen nineties. Our social club was started by a group of people wanting to meet neighbors that would not normally meet under everyday circumstances. And when discussing how to do that, some remembered and shared what these old harvest uh suppers were all about. So we brought the ideas uh to the Nottingham Historical Society and Nottingham Celebrates. And thank you both for, uh all of you, uh gladly agreeing to co-sponsor. Um as Tim said, um it is gonna be Saturday, September twentieth uh at five P M. Uh tickets are gonna be sold at the National Night Out tomorrow, as well as the Blueberry Pancake Breakfast on Sunday. Uh other future local locations to be determined as well. Tickets are gonna be ten dollars for adults. Um children, which will, we consider five to eleven, will be five and kids under five will be free. Uh this is gonna be, as you were saying, we don't have any um thing established, so a cash only. Uh but we will have change for everybody. Um and lastly, the uh proceeds. Uh will go back to some future Nottingham cause. We have lots of ideas, but um. One idea was about the uh saving the Grange because that's where the Harvest Suppers began and. Like I said, it's gonna be exciting to see. We're gonna start out small. Um want to sell hopefully like a hundred tickets and hopefully see where this goes.
Sounds awesome.
Important thing that slipped out, though, is what you're serving.
Uh we, I don't wanna steal the the complete menu, but it is going to be harvesting. Uh you know, not quite fall, but uh we have two types of um proteins that. On the menu, roasted root vegetables, of course, um mac and cheese, you can't go without, some great desserts. And we will have some vegetarian options as well.
No chicken nuggets, right?
We are the Nottingham Social Club. Not long, that's why we jumped on the bandwagon and we have, we're not, not a non-profit or anything, so. Uh we greatly appreciate both Nottingham Celebrates and the Historical Society for working with us as well.
And the proceeds are gonna be donated to a nonprofit?
And back in, I guess right now, um yes, uh working with the Historical Society and then. Depending on how long it takes to raise other funds and whatnot, we'll see where that goes.
One of the provisions of the application licensing is that.
Oh, yes.
It does say it right there. So are you guys gonna like set that aside for some future thing or? In the Historical Society or?
We've just started the talks, but it sounded from, again, I wasn't in personally, but we're going to be earmarking that those. Funds raised for, uh like I said, if it possibly, we're thinking long-term the Grange, but if there's also something more. Uh of a necessity that the town needs, maybe we can uh again with your support.
There's a lot of ideas floated around.
There's so many ideas right now.
The Grange scholarships.
Yes, definitely. Um our idea of the Grange, I haven't had a chance to be there in person, but we know there's. Some uh the front steps in particular.
Get you on a tour. Yeah, well, I guess there is. Um and I think Lee knows too that we were hoping to just have people in town know that there was a Grange.
Yes.
I would say most people who haven't lived here, you know, more than twenty years, go, the Grange? So to to give it a little publicity, right?
Fortunately, those fir trees in front kind of.
Yes, they do, so maybe we have a happy, you know, arborist to do something about those. How recently? I mean relatively, but it does need to be at least preserved. I mean, there there are foundational issues. Oh yeah, it's, you know, it would be my hope very much, you know, as you know, that we could do a save the Grange. Oh, I should. Thanks.
Are there any other questions for Miss Letterer about the event? That one's for me. Get a motion to approve?
I move that we approve the special event license application for the Nottingham Social Club for their Harvest Supper. Taking place on September twentieth, twenty twenty five, here at the community center.
And do we need to waive the fee?
I'll second that.
And, right, and because it is going to a nonprofit, any proceeds, we're gonna waive the fee, the application fee. Thank you, John.
I'll second it.
It's okay.
All in favor? Thank you. Well done.
Did you sign in?
I did.
Um performance bond for Mitchell Road subdivisions, so I think this has been going back and forth for a year now.
Yeah, long time.
But with the changes in two thousand twenty three to. The requirement of a performance bond, um I think it used to be required that if the. Planning board approved the subdivision, then they had to get this performance bond at that point.
They had to get, yeah, they used to have to get a performance bond ahead. Then there was a change that. They don't, didn't have to get a performance bond until, oh, they had to get the performance bond before property changed hands.
Or there's a, or they applied for a.
Right, or, right.
Occupancy permit.
Occupancy permit.
Yeah.
So in this case, the prop- there's two properties that actually have changed hands and we still don't have the performance bond yet.
Correct.
Uh DeBerto, the Mitchell Road subdivision.
The names of the roads are Captain Smith and Lipizan.
Or at least that's what we say in the plan board.
And so CMA has recommended um. A performance bond for Captain Smith. Additional ninety eight thousand three hundred ninety eight dollars, fourteen cents above what DeBerto had suggested. And an additional nineteen thousand one hundred fifty eight dollars, ninety five cents for Lipizan.
And that's not unusual, I don't think, because we had the same thing with other.
The one on one fifty six, I think it's the same thing.
And we typically would recommend what CMA suggests. I don't know if we have any discussion or.
I don't know, I read the.
That's very good. All right, I will. Okay, I will make a motion to approve the performance bond amounts for Captain Smith and Lipizan. In the Mitchell Road subdivision as recommended by CMA engineers. And the adjusted amounts of one million four hundred and sixty four thousand three hundred ninety six dollars and thirty two cents. And uh five hundred and twenty three thousand five hundred twenty eight dollars and forty five cents respectively. The bond security shall be provided in accordance with the methods specified in the Town of Nottingham subdivision regulations.
I'll second that. Sorry.
Okay, is the motion in a second? Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries.
Another one off the list.
Um the next one is road maintenance agreement. We had reviewed this um last month um for. Mister Bassett's property on map seventy lot twenty five and then the new lease subdivided lot twenty five dash five. Um to cover Channel Road, um or Channel Street. And so just a matter of signing the agreement for that section. Mister Bassett did reach out to Miss White and preferred that we address the other section of the road. And Olive Dam separately, since he had already worked to get this together and he is in a bit of a time crunch with the planning board to get things approved, so. We all in favor of signing this agreement?
Although, although in my opinion, by adding it would have been faster. But. Yeah. So that's my opinion, but, you know, I I'm sure that we can work with Kevin to get it. You know, it's just.
And he's waited so long.
Right, you know, and, yeah, it was more of a.
Yeah, too bad.
It's housekeeping.
So that that section of the road, the town has an easement to maintain the twenty five foot width and outside of that for maintenance purposes.
Yep, so um I guess I'll make a motion that we just sign it.
Yeah.
Continue working with Mister Bassett on. Olive Dam run.
Second that.
Motion in a second, all in favor? And then for assessing, we do have a request for abatement.
Make a motion to approve the request for abatement on map forty two lot two.
Was it in our email?
Yes, it was. Take a look.
So is this just a temporary abatement, just for this one year?
Right.
Okay, well, that's the, cuz the way it was, it's worded that. It seems like it would only be the one year, not going forward.
No, they're usually just for that.
Okay. It seems reasonable to me.
Circumstances. Sounds like my house when I bought it.
They haven't found a pool.
Yep, all right.
Yeah, that's too reasonable, yeah.
You made the motion, right?
I did make a motion.
I'll second the motion.
Uh there's a motion in a second, all in favor? Motion carries. Uh any update on the facility maintenance committee? We talked about it at our last meeting.
No, I haven't heard from Gary Anderson yet. He's going to be the chair.
Right.
Um and I have not reached out to him. I was waiting.
Was he gonna plan it or whatever?
I believe.
I think he was.
I think so, yes. That was my understanding.
That's what I thought too, but yes, I have not heard either.
I'm in no big hurry since I'm gonna be gone for a couple of weeks, so, um but I will reach out to him.
Okay, um and then at our last meeting, we had talked about the paving overage for Francesca Way, seven thousand dollars. And Ellen had sent the current expenditures up through August of two thousand twenty five. And just wanted to see if we had any feedback on anything that we see room for that project in the budget. Couple of items I noticed, one was our salaries. Um and I'm not gonna ask anybody to say who's doing what, but it doesn't look like. We're going to expend the full stipend for the select board. So I think there could be a few thousand dollars left there potentially by the end of the year. Excuse me?
Translate.
We don't, we don't give paid a whole lot from what we do, but we don't. The select board members that have opted not to receive the stipend so that the money can be used for operating budget. Certain members, yeah. Like I said, I'm not gonna say who's doing what. Okay, okay. You're welcome. Um and then the other one I noticed too, and I know we talked a little bit about it at the last meeting, was elections. There's no more elections. I think they could still see some training and I could always reach out to.
They have stuff every, just clean up little.
Well, the supervisors, right. But the election training, I think they might have some for the new voting machine at some point later this year, but. I can always reach out to Miss Fernal to ask her. With their, that they might be spending, but again, that's a couple thousand dollars as well.
It looks like they would be here. I'm sorry, I didn't really. Look for it very carefully.
Because, you you know, for example, for postage, there's no other mailings going out. For the elections until two thousand twenty six.
I'm just trying to think if the supervisors have to mail anything, cuz that's usually, it's under the same budget, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And training. There's twenty seven hundred dollars there that, again, that's the piece that I could reach out to the moderator to see if. There's any plans to spend that.
But we got some items that have gone over grossly too, like planning board, legal fees.
Well, legal fees are. Oh, for the plant, but the, those are all covered, cuz those are paid by the applicants.
Yeah, right, correct, as long as it's offset, yes, there's offset.
Yeah. And then a lot of, like, I know that she had mentioned that Betsy was, had, didn't have a chance to do it, but they're moving some of the items from warrant articles, like for building maintenance, um, because it's, it looks like a huge overage right now, but a lot of that's gonna come from the fund, not from the operating budget.
Right.
So I think we should still, um, work on this, I don't think we need to make a decision tonight, but, um.
I think.
And if we can't find extra money, then we just not do it.
Right, right.
It's a pretty simple equation and, um, Highway Director thought it could wait another year, so he could patch it, make it presentable for another year and deal with it next year, but.
Yeah, so maybe we look at it again in our next meetings to make sure, I mean, I think, again, I think it could fit this year.
I, I, yeah. I'd be surprised if we couldn't fit it.
Yeah.
Surprised.
Yes, we, there, for, for paving for this year, uh, we wanted to pave Stevens Hill, obviously, um, which is being done soon, uh, but one of the other roads was Francesca over
Mm-hmm.
path of one fifty two, um, and, but that went a little bit over the amount that we had in the warrant article to spend, so we're gonna have to spend it out of operating budget, so we're trying to find room in the operating budget
Thank you.
for that, you're welcome.
I think our budget is pretty tight, so I'd be pretty cautious of what you wanna.
I'm waiting a little bit longer just to be sure.
You know, I mean, it's like.
They would start it in what, September?
Can we grab it out of a shield coat, you know, kind of?
Right.
You know, that's really the spot that makes the most sense.
Yeah.
I started working on the Deerfield section today too.
Yeah, I'd say we continue to moderate, maybe by our September meeting, we can decide.
Cause they've gotta start in September, right? That's the plan, so we have a month to firm that up.
Yeah.
Good. No argument from me.
Okay. Do you wanna say the department heads have done a good job staying within and under budget? On a lot of items. Um, our next meeting is scheduled for the eighteenth, and after some discussion, I know I will not be able to attend, you will not be in attendance. Mr. Sherland, we're not sure about, you two potentially could be there.
Right.
Oh, you're up, Mia.
Well, I don't know, at some point I'm gonna, uh, on a road trip with my wife, so
Um.
I don't know when that's, um, gonna transpire.
I would suggest going on August eighteenth.
Right.
So I would like to think it was only gonna be three of us, so we might postpone the meeting to another day.
Okay.
When more people can be here.
Are we thinking the following Monday, the twenty fifth?
Depends on what people have for availability.
It's a Monday.
Or even a, uh.
Not a Tuesday.
Later in the week.
I'm gone that whole week and you're, are you gone that whole week too?
I'll be back on the twenty fourth. So I could do Monday, the twenty fifth.
Yeah, but that week, you're, you're out.
Yeah.
Right, right.
Yeah, it's just kinda.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Let's go to the next week.
That's twenty fifth.
Twenty fifth?
Yeah.
That would work for me.
That's fine.
Nope. Correct.
A Tuesday? Twenty six is Tuesday.
Yeah. Correct, which is Monday, yeah, the next day would, yeah.
The following Monday, that's alright.
But that would work for the four of us potentially, and then unless you're decided to go on a road trip that week.
Yeah, I don't know, it's not Labor Day, so, actually, you know what? That actually works out because the first would be our first next meeting, and that's Labor Day.
Oh.
Right, so I'll have.
So the twenty fifth actually makes.
Right, yeah, cause then we won't have a month between meetings.
Right, back to the eighth.
And then, so I would say then also, we'd be moving the meeting on the first, obviously, to the eighth. Make that decision now.
Or, or do we wanna do? The eighth and the twenty?
Second.
Second. So if we do the eighth to twenty second, and then it brings us to the sixth.
Back to our normal schedule.
Yep.
That's fine with me.
Yeah, that would work for me.
That works for me.
Yep, September.
September eighth and September twenty second.
Alright, I better write that down.
Yeah, and then we're back to October, was it sixth?
Twenty fifth, eight twenty five.
That'd be October first, no, you're right, sixth.
Nine eight, nine.
Twenty two.
Twenty two.
And then ten six.
And then ten, six.
To normal.
I was gonna ask Ellen too, we do, um, the state does allow us to sign, um, manifests electronically.
Sure.
Is, because, because I, I know moving this schedule is, that's gonna be one thing is signing all the man.
Yeah, but that happens.
We're gonna be a week or two behind.
We always get kind of messed up with, um, with a three day, uh, a three week period.
No, yeah, but I think this would help, as if we have the ability to just electronically sign them, they can, they can still be done, so.
On the regular schedule?
Yeah, we can bring it up at our next meeting, maybe.
I mean, I'm.
That's a good idea.
Which is on.
I'm not going anywhere, so I could always come in too.
Well, no, I mean for all of us to sign.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's better than waiting, confuses me.
Does that mean you, you are allowed to sign the contract?
Yes, the state allows for that. I don't know if we have the ability to do it, but, uh, quite yet, but Ellen's done a lot around here with the technology, so I have faith.
See, why not?
Right.
Alright, so that's our, we'll have to have Ellen post those dates.
Yep.
Yeah.
I'll send her an email, well, obviously she should be leaving the mess too. Anything else? Move on to public comment?
And you mentioned the assessments, and you said they've gone up twenty to twenty five percent in general?
Again, I'm just, no, I said any from twenty five to thirty five percent, depends.
Twenty five to thirty five, okay.
Yeah, just from what I've been hearing folks say, again, I was, I didn't read through the whole, there's a preliminary report on that website I had mentioned
I think it would be good to reprove it, because, uh, ten years ago, give or take the lake properties were all boosted up when we had some people on the board who were, had another lake property, that said their lake properties weren't worth more, but ours were on Pawtucket Way, but anyway, I've got property that went up seventy percent. The home I live in went up sixty two percent, and the home my husband's in is up forty six percent. That's a lot, a lot, a lot, and there have been no significant changes to those properties.
Well, I think so, one of the things we knew last year as a Board of Selectmen, and we mentioned it in a couple of meetings, is that our town valuation was potentially at about sixty six percent of what it was supposed to be according to the state.
Yeah, I've looked at recent sales prices, um, for property next to the lake property that we own, and similar properties have all lost money on their sales in the last three or four years, I can't find any for this year, but they've all lost like ten percent.
Did you go through the, the report?
I did not, cause I couldn't get in, but I'm gonna try again, cause I'm not sure.
So I was, there's a whole list of properties that sold last year, and I looked through the list, and I didn't see any that sold for a loss.
Yeah, I found, yeah, this would be twenty two, twenty one in that, in that range.
That's understandable.
But I would, I would suggest going on and just reaching out to Avatar, cause then what they can do is if you feel your property is valued too high.
Man, that's crazy, having a property go up three hundred thousand dollars, almost seventy percent.
But I think, if you think about the state of New Hampshire and how much property value, and we didn't have, the last valuation was in two thousand.
Been five years ago.
I don't think they did in twenty.
No, they did.
They did, okay, but that was just prior, that was in the midst of the pandemic, before values skyrocketed in New Hampshire.
Right, but now nobody can afford property either, so when you're looking to bring in.
Kind of a nationwide problem, I know, I sympathize.
They won't affect the tax rate or the amount of taxes that you pay.
Tax rate.
Values go up, but it won't affect your tax.
Well, it will affect my tax if you're saying things went up twenty five to thirty percent, and my property went up seventy percent, so my taxes would go up.
I would, I was using a general. Yeah, I was using a general, yeah, but your taxes potentially, right.
But even so, my taxes would go up a lot more than my neighbors.
Correct.
And that's not fair.
So I would suggest if you.
I just wanted to wind, and I will talk to Avatar, but I think
Do you have an appointment with them?
Based on what, based on what I could see, it looked like a generic problem that I think the whole town needs to carefully analyze the Avatar report and make sure that it's fair.
Did you, yeah, so I would recommend number two, number one, did you make an appointment with them yet?
I did not, because you have to go in and sign in online, and I'm just not big on signing in online after getting a lot of notes from a lot of different companies saying my data's been compromised, so I don't wanna be compromised anymore, and I don't wanna pay.
They come in and do it personally?
Certain number.
Probably can.
There's probably a, do you have the letter still?
Pardon?
Do you have the letter from Avatar?
Yes, I do.
I think there's a number on there.
I have the information, I have the information.
So I'd recommend calling to make an appointment, because again, I think it ends this week, the, the appointments, I think.
Right, I understand that, but I just wanted to come and say that I think it could be a generic issue and ask that you all consider it that way, and if you do have a report that you can look at, is there a report at the town hall?
No, because it's a preliminary report that Avatar provided on that, you can get it on that website.
So they didn't provide a preliminary report to you guys?
We haven't received it yet, no, it's not on our website, it's on the Avatar website, cause they just, they sent the letters out two weeks ago, so I the report was just up, up recently.
It's on their website here.
So if you go to Taxpayer Resources on the left.
My valuation went through the roof too.
Yeah, pardon?
Mine went through the roof too, so I'm feeling alone.
Are you on, you're over on, uh, Ford, what, or Deerfield?
Deerfield.
Yeah, nice.
Did it go up that much, seventy percent?
Wasn't seventy, but it wasn't thirty either.
Subscriber.
So it's Town of Nottingham. Yeah.
And spaces?
Yeah, but yeah, it is available on that, that website, and you can take a peek.
Okay.
Thank you.
And this was in the letter too, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
Your certain password.
Oh, did you guys hire a land use clerk yet?
No.
No.
Do you want somebody part time, temporary?
I think part time, permanent would be fantastic, are, are you looking?
Bandom, what? I don't wanna fill out a lot of paperwork, but I'd be happy to do the work. I've worked for the recycling center, I've worked for the police department, I've worked for the election people, so I'm on file here somewhere, so I would be happy to help out.
So you, you have Ellen's contact information, Ellen White, I would reach out to Ellen and definitely, and let her know.
So they're looking for some, some things to get done.
Well, I'm sure, I mean, cause, uh, our prior land use clerk, she was done as of two weeks ago, so I'm sure there's
There's things that could be.
Plenty to do.
Right, yes, thank you for that, appreciate it.
Okay.
Did you sign in?
No, but I will.
Please do, thank you, uh, Nottingham.
I wasn't decide, hadn't decided I was.
Nottingham.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other public comment, Mr. Soref?
Um, two things, one echo what Charlie, Charlie was talking about the night out, and invite you all to the Blueberry Pancake Breakfast, which will be this Sunday from eight to ten thirty. And if you do as well cooking at the night out, you may be pressed into full service.
Hey, I'm cooking too, I'm a grill master.
Not me.
Mistress, I guess.
I won't, I can't be there.
I'm not sure, that can be, I'll be there.
Well, at least three of you will be there.
It's twenty twenty five.
Of course, I don't know where my.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sounds like fun.
Of course, it's all by parts.
It's a, it's a good time, yeah.
It is a good time, and very good pick.
So a great week for some good community events going on tomorrow night, should be busy, uh, when we did it two years ago, there was a lot of people there, so.
Oh my gosh, yeah, such a good turnout.
Yeah.
We were fortunate that night, though, we had the special election same night.
Oh, that's right.
Right.
So we had a captured audience.
Got that, yeah, but there was still.
But that, that ended at seven.
And I think the fireworks will be exciting, music, and, hey, free food, feed them, they will come.
Right.
And the blueberry pancake breakfast is always great.
Do we have anything else? We don't have non-public for tonight.
No non-public?
No.
Wow.
Alright, so do you, are you asking for a motion to adjourn?
I am.
Oh.
I will make a motion to adjourn.
I, I will second that.
There's a motion in a second to adjourn our meeting? Close.
Close, not close.
Can see when Ellen's away.
Forty six minutes.
So you get a motion in a second to close our meeting? All in favor?
Aye, no, no, we're not gonna.
No, no, we don't have to go into non-public tonight, wow. Thank you, Ellen, wherever you are.
Thank you Nottingham, have a great evening, and we hope to see you all tomorrow night, and then again on Sunday at the Blueberry Breakfast, Blueberry Pancake Breakfast.